Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five special meeting of the Boulder City Council. I will go ahead and call us to order. And welcome everyone back from council recess. I hope you got some downtime and a little bit of rest and relaxation. It's good to be back together. So. Let's get that roll call going, please, Alicia.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and again, welcome, everyone. We'll start tonight's roll call in alphabetical order by everyone's first name with Mayor Brockett.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts.
Here.
Councilmember Benjamin?
Here.
Markwes?
Here.
Shuhar?
Here.
Wallick?
Here.
And Weiner.
Here, and last as usual, no matter which way you do it.
Unfortunately, yes, ma'am. Mayor, we have our call.
Thanks so much. Alicia, if we can go to the consent agenda now, please.
Yes, sir. Our consent agenda are items number two on tonight's agenda, and they consist of items two A through two F.
Do you have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I just wanted to clarify point of point of order on, I'm sorry, I'm still. Uh, getting used to where I put things.
Thank you.
The new system, but. No, I'm, I'm, I'm still not great in here. Um, but it was the one on the council procedures, and I just wanted to make sure it was just the first reading, correct?
Teresa, do you want to address that?
Good evening, Council. Teresa Taylor Tate, your city attorney. Uh, this is a, this is a reading um on emergency, and so it would need to pass by two thirds. Of a majority vote to pass on emergency, and that would only require one reading.
Okay, then I would like to pull that from the rest of them and vote separately.
And to vote separately on that, um, you certainly can vote separately on that. Teresa says that is sufficient to just have that request, and then we vote separately on it. That's fine. Um, Mark?
Uh, yeah, I have uh some concerns with respect to the council procedures, uh, in particular. Setting a hard and fast time limit on open comment and leaving people in the position where they're gonna have to come back the following week. I really don't think that is fair to them. However, uh, I'm prepared to go forward with it and sort of provisionally. Um, let's see what happens. Let's see if it works. Um, but if it's gonna cause a lot of um difficulty for people who don't get the opportunity. To speak and we're being told, come back next week, whatever arrangements you made this week, you're gonna have to make them again next week. If that causes a problem, I I hope we can revisit it at the appropriate time. But I will uh go forward with it tonight. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Mark. I know we can certainly look at how successful or not things are and adjust if necessary. Right, I'm not seeing any other hands, so let's move forward with a vote. Um, Teresa and Alicia, would you recommend voting on item B first or the rest of consent agenda first?
Will there be a discussion or just the votes for two A?
Uh, this, this is two B, I believe.
Oh, two B. Actually, it's two A.
Mayor, I believe it's two A.
It is two A.
Uh, rules and procedures in my script are two B, two A is the square, two hundred and fifty square feet disposal. Is that not?
Hmm, did I mess your script up?
I have the same thing. Uh, it is two B in my. Documents.
Dear.
Hmm, that was mine following the scripts, and my apologies.
See, I'm just uh going into the one meeting. What old suit we have there?
Oh, the sale is two A, God, yeah, okay.
I have two A as well. Am I looking at the wrong thing?
I have two A.
Yeah, in the portal, it's two A.
Yeah, and I messed that up on the script, because it two A should have been the sale. So. We were struggling with the first agenda, so my apologies. So it is in the actual agenda that is posted, it is two A.
Okay, so in the actual agenda, so the correct agenda then, two A is rules and procedures, and the open space disposal is two C.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My apologies.
You got that cleared up? So two A is what's under discussion or um up for separate vote, and then Teresa, we don't do this very often, so perhaps you could uh let us know the best way to proceed with that procedure.
Um, so Mayor, you could take it in either order. Uh, you would want to entertain a motion to um. To pass the consent agenda items two B through F. Um, and then you could move on to two A in the discussion, the attendant discussion.
Works for me, so I wonder if someone might contemplate a motion for the rest of the consent agenda.
I move items uh two B through two F on the consent agenda.
Again.
We have a motion and a second. Alicia, can you do a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir, and again, my apologies for the script mishap. Uh, we'll start the roll call with you, Mayor Brockett, for consent agenda items two A through two F.
I think it's two B through two F.
Two B through two F, thank you. Grace, thank you. Two B through two F.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts?
Yes.
Councilmember Benjamin?
Yes.
Markwes?
Yes.
Spear?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Shuhar?
Yes.
Wallick?
Yes.
And Weiner.
Yes.
The consent agenda items two B through two F are hereby approved unanimously.
Thank you for that. And now we can take under consideration item two A, which is the changes to the council rules or procedure, if anyone's interested in perhaps a motion on that one.
I would like to move um two A. Second.
A sec.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Um, and then, yes, Lauren, you got your hand raised.
I just wanted, because we can make quick comments right now, right?
You can.
Um, so I. Um, largely support this. I'm not a fan of not having video. I think that it's likely, I think that there's. If the internet has taught us anything, having people's faces matched with what they say is sometimes helpful in um. Making their comments more moderated, but uh I will be in support of this. Um, but I do hope, like Mark mentioned, that we. Listen to what the community is saying and consider making changes um in the future.
Thanks, ma'am. Taisha and then Ryan.
Thank you so much. Um, you know, there are so much about this that I fully, fully support. Uh, um, you know, uh, and and unfortunately, um, there are components specifically the move this this. False separation of open comment with the rest of the meeting as if it's a different part. Um, and then, and then ultimately the decision to start the meeting at five thirty, which I think it makes it more difficult for people to join. So not only are we. Um, you know, restricting to a very strict time period, which actually I agree with, because we do have a lot of additional items related um to the city. And, you know, I I believe that we need to have barriers to um, you know, to our time limits. However, um, moving it to five thirty makes it even more difficult for working families to be able to participate. Um, in person, and yes, you can do virtual, but it is different. Um, some folks stay um throughout the meeting and wait for a break, and we can talk with them. Um, you know, as a former commissioner for Colorado Parks and Wildlife, um, we would have meetings all across the state. And it was incredible to see, and it was all during the day, during the workday, and yet people drove for hours to be able to come and speak to us directly, and it's powerful. Um, these kinds of relationships are absolutely more critical, um, now that we are in a world of divide and conquer. Um, at at every level, and so unfortunately, I will have to say, um, no, and I appreciate. Um, my councilmates for uh following procedure and allowing us to have this separate vote. I I appreciate the conversation and the robustness of that conversation, and as I said, I agree with majority of of what there is here. However. Um, that move, I think disproportionately impacts uh low income and working families. And thank you very much. Also, the video, I echo the concerns by Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts.
Hey, Brian.
Thanks, just briefly, because I know he already hashed all this out. Um, yeah, I I share the concerns I've heard from. Councilmember Folkerts, um, Adams, Wallick, um, and, you know, I also think we're, we have some problems to solve, and I feel good about doing this, trying this. If we can get to a world where we are not inundated with disruptions and recesses, I would be very happy to, yeah, take a look again at things. So I would just offer that to the community that, you know, we're, um, this isn't necessarily forever, but we are trying to make some process improvements, and we'll see what we get, and then readdress when we, and if we have to. So looking forward to voting us on this.
Great, thanks. Yeah, and I'll echo my colleagues. I feel like this is a good package of changes. We'll give it a try, and if things need adjustment, uh, we can adjust them afterwards a little bit later, but. I'm in support of packages as proposed. So, uh, not seeing any other hands raised. Uh, Alicia, can we do a roll call on this, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. We'll start with you, Mayor Rocket, for item two A.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts?
Yes.
Councilmember Benjamin?
Yes.
Markwes?
Yes.
Spear?
Yes.
Adams?
No.
Shuhar?
Yes.
Wallick?
Yes.
And Weiner.
Yes.
Item two A, related to council procedures, is hereby approved with a vote of eight to one.
All right, thank you for that. That finishes out the consent agenda, so can we go to our first matters item, please?
Yes, sir. Our matters items are number three on tonight's agenda. Three A is the manufactured. Home, I'm sorry, manufactured housing strategy review.
And with that, Mayor, we're gonna go straight to our Director of Housing and Human Services, Kurt Fernhauer. Thank you, Kurt.
Uh, good evening, Council. Um, again, Kurt Fernhauer, I support the Department of Housing and Human Services, and. Um, we're going to be doing a review of the uh, the strategy that was approved by previous councils a few years ago. Um, to support the manufactured housing community. I think what's changed over the years since we um, uh, initially adopted that strategy. Back at that time, it was primarily housing and services that were engaged with the work within manufactured community. Now there's several departments within the city that uh lean into the work of supporting um these community members. And so that's been a real growth um that we've seen um within our city. And um, I've been quite excited about the collaboration that's happened between um departments and coordinating the work. So tonight, um, Molly Taylor will be doing uh, uh, her first rodeo at council, and I'm presenting. Uh, to you, uh, the update to our manufactured housing strategy. Thank you. It's all yours, Molly.
Thank you, Kurt. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, members of council, and my colleagues. Welcome back. Um, I'm delighted to be with you tonight. Oh, we need a slideshow. Let's bring that on up. First things first. There we go. I'm de- I'm delighted tonight to um be with you to share an overview of the continued implementation of the manufactured housing strategy. As Kurt just mentioned, the strategy was adopted in two thousand and nineteen and updated in two thousand and twenty two. Um, attachment A in your packet contains a list of all of the original action items and a brief status update for each of those. I also want to start off by just observing that the city of Boulder set a pretty high bar for support for manufactured housing communities. It's um pretty awesome to step into the learning role that I play in this right now and speak with other communities statewide and just see how much we do. Um, and as Kurt said, it has become quite a collaboration across all of the city. Next slide, please. Tonight, um, the the manufactured housing strategy is is reviewed as a council priority. During the May city council um retreat, a a couple of you identified an interest of to check in on. At least one of the action items, and we will do so a little bit later. So I'm gonna start off with a review of the action plan and the accomplishments to date and illustrate for you a little bit about how the strategy has guided staff's support for manufactured housing residents. Um, and then again, at the end, summarize a little bit of our meetings with private park owners to try and answer the question raised by. Mayor uh Brockett and Councilmember Wallick regarding, is there any opportunity for partnership with our private parks? Especially in the interest of getting to um rent stabilization. Next slide. This is a map containing all of the mobile home parks in the city of Boulder. There are five, and it it they are largely located on the north side of the city. If you look at the top northwest corner of our of our map. And the top left corner of your um screen, you see Ponderosa. It is located at uh North Highway ninety three Violet and Broadway. Um, it is blue because the city of Boulder purchased it in two thousand and seventeen, so it is a publicly held property. Directly east of that, little less than a mile maybe, is Boulder Meadows. It is a private mobile home park, and as you can see from this mapping, it's quite large. Going straight south from Boulder Meadows, you will see the Mapleton Mobile Home Park. Um, it is in blue, not that we own it, but. Uh, Thistle does. It is held as a community land trust by Thistle Housing. East of Mapleton, couple miles, Orchard Grove is at the intersection of thirtieth and Valmont. And then a little further east is Vista Village. Um, all of the pink properties are privately held mobile home parks. I also want to note that in addition to these five parks, there are um three additional parks adjacent to the city limits. They are all located in area two. These are Columbine, San Lazaro, and Table Mesa Village. Um, these parks could be annexed into the city. Further south of the city in area three is San Susi. San Susi is a resident owned community. We we shorthand that as Rock. Um, the the residents of that community purchased that property in two thousand and twenty one. It is located in area three and does not qualify for annexation. I just want to mention that these last four parks are not, we we have no jurisdiction over those. Next slide. The commitment by our city to the manufactured housing committees goes way back, and um back in the eighties. We find policy seven oh nine, which was a statement in support of. We will do whatever we can to both preserve and expand the importance of this housing type as we continue to develop as a city. This is still in the comp plan update this year. I think some of the emphasis have changed, and primarily where we go to work every day is in preservation. Um, one of the things that I want to note early on in this is that the operation rules for manufactured housing, commonly referred to as mobile home parks. Are set by the state. All of them are licensed by the state, and all of the regulatory and enforcement framework comes from uh the Department of Local Affairs. Next slide. This is a a snapshot um of the status of the housing and the census of housing in the parks in Boulder. Um, the people inside of these parks um are all. It it's kind of a mix. They're all very, very diverse, and the diversity is age, income, and cultural. Um, so you can't really pinpoint any of it all. But in the most recent survey from our staff in front of the parks, seventy five percent of our residents identified, self identified themselves as having incomes below forty thousand a year. Forty one percent of these are folks who are living on social security or some level of disability. And sixty percent of the housing overall in these mobile home communities is greater than thirty years old, and fifty percent of that. Um, what we were showing, saying, showing is thirty percent, thirty seven percent of the total is over fifty years old. So, um, what we find as we get into the communities and get to uh visit with and and uh spend time with our neighbors. Is that many of the residents in our manufactured housing communities have been there for decades. Um, a lot of the residents are a pretty significant slice of our low and moderate income workforce in Boulder. And um now we have a lot of seniors there who are desirous of aging in place. Next slice. I'm going to dive into history, and I'm not a great historian, but I have to tell you that the Carnegie Library has some really great information about all of this, so um I'll go back. We we start with a few photos, but early on, you begin to see mobile home parks documented across the city by nineteen fifty. Um, in fact, there was a camp, there was a veterans camp at twenty fourth and Arapahoe back before then. Um, Mapleton Mobile Home Park shows up in nineteen fifty four, though other historic records say it wasn't actually formally established until sixty three. In fifty eight, at that little corner map, kind of grainy, it's kind of small on the bottom right hand, you will find Ponderosa. You can see if you look at the west side of this, Win- Wonderland Lake, um, along the western edge of that picture. Ponderosa is a little teeny cluster of homes way up at the end of ninety three, right at the top of the edge of the photo. I couldn't make it any prettier. But it just shows you that a lot of these parks predate us. They've been here for a while. Nineteen sixty, my my uh longer photo at the bottom is one of the first photos of Orchard Grove. Next slide. A sample timeline of the um. Going forward from from this history is that in the nineteen seventies, things really take off. Um, there is a national mobile home boom, and one in every ho- four homes built in the seventies was a mobile or manufactured home. Um, this was both welcomed for people looking for work, people exploring the manifest destiny of the United States. Post-war booming for truck creators and the um building industry. Um, but it also began the rejection of cities to the concept of the mobile home park, and you begin to see single family zoning in cities that challenge. The development of these parks, which is probably why we largely see most of them on edges of cities and in rural areas. Again, in the nineteen eighties, the city recognized the value of mobile homes and um. Added the notes and support in our comprehensive plan policies. And in eighty five, we actually instituted mobile home park zoning. It was not mandatory at that time, and a lot of the properties have opted in over time. I think Orchard Grove um actually. Uh, changed their zoning in two thousand and nine. Next slide. And then that flood shows up in two thousand and thirteen, and um the impact to the manufactured housing communities in the front range was pretty devastating. Um, during that time, Mapleton uh was significantly damaged, and using uh some of our various. Um, health and human services funding, we were able to purchase that property and begin that owner, facility, the ownership of Mapleton by Thistle. In two thousand and fourteen, um, the Ponderosa owners approached the city looking for funding because there, as you can see in the background of this photo. Their infrastructure was failing, and um over the next three years, working with CDBG disaster relief funding. Um, the city was working with the owner in in an attempt to upgrade the the facilities, but we ended up pu- purchasing Ponderosa in two thousand and seventeen. The biggest story moving forward from this era is that activism around the manufactured housing community, the residents' interest, the safety and health of these communities. Um, moves forward, and you begin to see legislative action. Next slide. To dive into the strategy itself, um, I wanted to focus in on the action items and look at this through the lens of legislation. Which is a place where a lot of positive benefits have been have been um achieved in recent years. Resident support, which is what our staff and our colleagues and partners in the community do daily. And then the that question regarding collaboration with our park owners. Next slide. This is going to be very high level, but there is an attachment in your packet, it is um, attachment B, that gives you a, a snapshot of all of the recent um, Colorado legis- Colorado legislation specific to mobile home parks and manufactured housing, so there's some um, additional links there for you to, to dig a little deeper. As I stated earlier, mobile home parks are licensed and licensed and regulated by the state and thus much of the opportunity to affect the operating standards and the condition of these parks requires legislative action. We've been blessed, um, we've had um, some state reps who've been working very hard on this and have been attending to the interests of this, this um, housing type. Um, since twenty nineteen, lots of bills have been passed that addressed specific concerns. Um, and specifically in twenty twenty, the um, HB twenty-two twelve eighty-seven formed what is known as the Mobile Home Park. Uh, oh, I can't think of it, M-POP, it's where you can actually go in and file a complaint, get legal support. It um, expanded greatly the rights of the residents and the education available to people who are um, working with park owners. Next slide. Additional um, highlights was, is that we now have legislation that influences how park management communicates changes in policies across the residents. Um, we ensure now that the information is provided in the residents' first language. There are requirements for adequate notice, there's requirements for potable water if there's a water disturbance or people being provided a different place to stay in the event of a longer term interruption. And then there's clarification around the right to buy and sell homes in parks. More recently, eh, the state also passed new water quality provisions and uh, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment has been out in the past year testing all of the water distribution systems in all the parks. It has set up a dashboard for that, so anyone wanting to see how they come out, it is available online. All of our parks on the city water system came in just fine. Um, some of our park owners have expressed that they have benefited greatly from a recent cap that the legislature put in place. Um, exempting properties valued at less than twenty-eight thousand um, from any continued taxation of their property, and that's been great. Again, the city advocates profoundly for this, um, our, our state legislative staff um, has been at work on this for many years. And also I want to shout out that our Coalition of Mobile Home Owners in Boulder, C-Mob, has also been doing some advocacy at the state level. Next slide. Another part of the lens for how we look at this, um, the implementation of the tasks in the strategy is through um, the work of our staff. And very important to that has been a leadership role played by our community engagement staff, um, community outreach and community engagement. They did an amazing amount of work through COVID nineteen to make sure that each of the manufactured housing communities had great information. Navigators, community connectors, um, people who were actually provided some stipend and support to be hands and helpers for their residents, for their neighbors. Um, this group also coordinates and hosts the Coalition of Mobile Home Owners in Boulder and suppo- supports a, I think it's bi-monthly meeting um, for this organization, for this group of advocates for the communities. And we provide up to three thousand annually for each of the parks, um, neighborhood groups, oftentimes referred to as homeowner association, to do whatever they feel is most pressing and needing, needed. Um, we have community parks, we have um, gardens and oftentimes a lot of community building events. Um, we have one of the communities that has actually saved some of their money off so that they can help people in need. Um, under climate and hu- Health and Human Services and the departments um, who coordinate additional social service networking in our city, um, we see a lot of work. Specific to climate, there have been many, many years of home repair grants. They start off with um, a, a series of grants that were held three to five years ago where um, homeowners could get up to ten thousand dollars for home repairs. Um, that money has ended, but it has been replaced by other sources, we are, we, we don't have a consistent funding source for this work, but we have a staff who are constantly um, pulling together and investigating and doing what we can to support this. Um, I will also want to note that there's a typo on this page. Um, in my scan of the winterization support and Colorado care support and climates monies to um, deal with the wind damage and other things that we have put resources into parks for. Um, the actual total amount is three point one two million that have been spent on manufactured housing grants in the, in the recent years. Next slide. And then there's ongoing support from Housing and Human Services and our Human Rights Staff and our Code Enforcement Staff, as Kurt said, it, it, it probably all started out largely as a housing initiative, but now um, we're all walking together um, to get out in front of anything we can to support these communities. Um, we oftentimes have people come to us for, or come to our, our nonprofit partners for help with eviction, eviction prevention and rent assistance. Uh, the code enforcement staff is uh, in front of residents who want to sell a home, who need to get a certificate that there's of habitability and make sure that that home, it can be transferred. Um, and then more recently, in, in recent years, um, we, we're providing a lot of support at Orchard Grove. Um, we had some residents in Orchard Grove that um, did some home repair and remodels without permits and there's been some working backward to further repair and make those homes stable again. Code enforcement's been out in front of the um, work with the residents, answering questions, showing them how best to make things work again, make things right again. Um, and we've also been working very closely with the ownership out there, so it's been a partner between our city staff and the park owner as well. I'm happy to report that most of the homes at Orchard Grove have been restored to habitability. Next slide. The big question coming from the retreat in May of twenty twenty-four is, is there an opportunity to create some form of rent stabilization and um, partner with the private owners? And um, right now, i- in between February and May, Kurt, Fern Huber, myself and Krista Ville, who should also be available here tonight, went out and talked with the property owners and the answer largely is they are not interested at this time. Um, they don't have a need, they don't have any um, need for investment in their plant, they have assured us that they have made significant um, upgrades to their water distribution system, they have offered to send us copies of their maintenance schedules and offered to share their utility mapping system. Um, they uh, were very gracious and provided us a lot of good information about how their parks operate. Um, but stopped short of the idea that they would begin to operate a um, rent stabilization, some sort of a rent abatement or rent reduction program themselves. They did, of course, offer that they accept all sorts of housing vouchers and other forms of payment from our not-for-profit community and church groups who help support some of their um, residents in need. They were very enthusiastic about being in Boulder and how much they benefit from the Parks and Rec Department programs for the kids and um, all of the help that they have received from our city across the years. Next slide. So we continue this work, the strategy is in place, it is a living document and um, it ensures that the work that we do on behalf of our residents is beneficial, appreciated and ongoing. Um, coming up next, we have continued community engagement and the ongoing work to elevate the voices of these special communities. We continue to support and preserve aging homes as shown earlier in the presentation. Um, these are kind of locked little communities with locked set of housing type and so this need does not decrease over time. Um, recently, we received, were award from the state of Colorado, we've received notice in the recent weeks that we're getting two point eight four million dollars from the Proposition One Twenty-three funds to stand up a program that our staff is calling Boulder Rehab and Replacement and that will provide new funds to support rehabilitation of both manufactured housing and single-family homeowners. Uh, and then also, the, the big win for this is that that money can be used to replace manufactured homes, people can buy new homes with it. Um, we also will continue to stand up all, any support we can for people who are facing landlord tenant issues. We have a guide and we have a lot of staff in the community mediation office that helps. And we will continue to engage with those private property owners and uh, keep that relationship going and we're planning right now on an annual check-in with them. That is the end of my presentation, Kurt Firdhuber is with me as well as Krista Ville, who is from Utilities. Um, and he also participated in the meetings with the property owners, so if you have any questions for us.
Thanks so much for that Molly and it's great to have you at a council meeting, welcome.
Thank you. Great to be here.
Excellent. So uh, council, this is our chance to ask clarifying questions of Molly, Kurt or any other member of the team. I got Ryan out of the gate. Nope, Ryan's handling.
Sorry Aaron, that was a mistake, I, nothing for me, thank you.
No worries, so I got Nicole and then Taysha.
Yeah, thanks so much um, for the presentation and summary and uh, just, it was really um, it was really cool to see how many of the things we've checked off over the last um, five, six, seven years uh, on the, the action plan, so just thank you for all your work on that. Uh, I just had a really quick question, um, for renters, the Tenant Advisory Committee uh, recently generated sort of a tenants' um, handbook. Is there an equivalent for people who live in manufactured home communities and is that available, say at the state level or something like that? I'm just wondering, if people have questions, what would be the best um, place to send them? Um, if, say they're residents living in one of the parks or something like that.
Mm-hmm, um, thank you for the question, um, we, we do have a, an equivalent to that, it is um, in update right now. Given the fact that we are all working on accessibility for all of our documentation. It, and we've had some staff changes in the past three or four years, it needed some updating and so it is available and it should be available publicly soon. But always uh, our tenants in any, in any community the city is welcome, are welcome to come to housing and work with our staff and um, our, we will guide them through resources available from our not prof- for-profit partners if needed, but yes, same applies to our manufactured housing residents.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much and yeah, just thanks again for all your work, it was uh, disappointing to hear that there was no interest from the property owners um, about uh, working with us on some rent stabilization, uh, but I really appreciate you all for trying.
Absolutely, all right, Taysha, Tina and Lauren.
Thank you so much, that was um, just so much wonderful work, uh, I really, I, I have had an opportunity to uh, participate in one of the bi-annual or bi-monthly meetings of the manu- vanu- manufactured home, or is it C-Mob?
C-Mob.
Thank you, um, and just again, you know, I, I highly recommend um, more time uh, and opportunities for my colleagues as well to hear directly, uh, because I can anticipate there are going to be more needs um, in, in the months and years ahead, so to know that we've got such incredible work to build on, especially uh, with the Boulder Mod and, and Ponderosa, um, the rebate program, you know, the, obviously the, the energy um, support, the home repairs, there's just so much wonderful work and so um, I did have some concerns around the fiscal note however, because it indicated that there was no, or whatever the language was, I guess what I'm saying is um, when I was expecting that the fiscal note is not having to go through all the slides to find out all the financial information related to what we're talking about. And so, but unfortunately, there wasn't anything in the fiscal note and I had to do that and then crosswalk it with other things and so it just would have been helpful to have more information in the fiscal note section around the investments that have been made, the expenses, um, the revenue, you know, the three thousand dollars that go to community building, the ten thousand for home repairs, the three point one nine or two, you know, if there's some, some substantial contributions from the state or um, the feds, it just would be helpful to, in grounding, especially as we know we're fiscally restrained and we're going into the budget season to have more of that financial information uh, would be very helpful and this applies to this and all of our topics moving forward and, and perhaps there's a conversation that needs to be had or uh, something where we can share more about the expectations for the fiscal note. Um, but I know this is new and I'm just grateful to have it. Um, I did have a question though about the equity analysis, I noticed it wasn't completed, so I was wondering well, why it wasn't completed and then what were, what is the criteria for that review, given that this um, uh, project or item uh, includes low wealth, low income, uh, elder, uh, our aging and elder community as well as our racially and ethically diverse communities, so just curious um, to hear a little bit more why the equity review wasn't applied and what criteria is typically used to determine whether it will be applied.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Adams, um, I would offer that the strategy itself was put in place before with the equity tool was brought online and, but it is certainly something that we should do as an update, as a check-in to see how are the action items lining up with, given that current lens.
Oh, awesome, and I think, I, I, I'm sure the C, the C-Mob group would, would love to, to participate and even perhaps lead that, um, so thank you for, for that. Um, I also had a question, um, I had, I had a, an opportunity to hear um, from some folks when I went to uh, the, the session with uh, Unity um, and, and how to have hard conversations. And um, somebody mentioned that BHP has a, a gar- a micro gardening program. And I just thought, I know that there'd been some conversations around either community gardens for um, on the different properties or ones that we have relationships with. Um, and I'm just, I'm lifting up the, I'm referring rather back to our council chats with um, on food access and uh, food affordability and there were um, concerns and, and uh, around those issues and um, seeing that that is, is a successful program that's being operated, I just was kind of curious. Um, perhaps in the next steps, you know, is there an agricultural relationship um, that could be explored to support um, not only food affordability, accessibility, but also um, we know that there's science around mental and physical health and having gardens and those kinds of things. We know the biodiversity add there, given, I think, didn't one of them or some of them have to cut some trees? And so really just thinking about how everybody can be a part of the climate solution um, as well as a- addressing some of the food um, access and issues, so I wanted to just lift that up. Um, and then lastly, um, just for the next steps, I thought it was curious that there wasn't any identified next steps, but I would just like to add one, which is the upcoming budgeting season and just really making sure, I would love to make sure that the C-Mob eh, has been engaged and involves um, in providing feedback to, to what is being proposed and, and making sure that the um, you know, those that are, are living the experience are, are really in, in the lead in, in identifying um, and making proposals around our budget, um, as well as uh, any federal issues that may apply to some of the, the folks that are living. So again, just the quality, the, the equity study or information will be really helpful and you already have some of that information based on what you shared this evening, so those are my comments, but just in general, over the moon and if anything, would love to see this level of human support and less on um, things that are not helpful and beneficial to our goals, thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for that guidance and for highlighting these interests and um, I just want to ask Kurt, Kurt, did you have anything to add regarding community garden and BHP's initiative at all?
Sure, yeah, thank you for that, um.
The micro gardens.
I, I, I do know that some of the parks do have um, shared garden space. Ponderosa also started one, um, I think it was about three years ago. Um, and they use some of the uh, city grant funding to build the beds and bring in some good soil and that sort of thing as well, so there is, there is some of that going on, but we, we certainly agree with you about trying to um, increase and grow that, that, that opportunity for residents. And we'll look for those opportunities.
Awesome, thank you and hopefully I'll work real hard to try and see if we can squeeze out some money, maybe take some money away from uh, garage renovations, right, and actually feed people and, 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 and our, our non-human kin, so thank you so much for all the work that you do, um, not just in, you know, space, but in building um, the, the opportu- the building opportunities as well, I'm just really excited about where that's going to go, it's, it's just so needed. I'm just really excited about where that's going to go. It's, it's just so needed.
Thanks. We got Tina and Lauren.
Yeah, I just had a quick question and thanks for all the information, um, about the opportunity to buy mobile hopes, homes, uh, mobile home parks by owners. Is there an equivalent strategy for apartment buildings that is structured that we can learn about?
Don't get going there.
Please do. I, yeah.
There, there was, uh, state legislation passed. Those types of properties to notify, um, the, the city that they will, uh, be putting their properties up for sale. Um, there isn't the funding available, however, like there is manufactured home communities, um, to help purchase those. So in, in those cases, we would primarily have to use our own resources. Prop 123 has identified that, um, as a possible, i- 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 as a type of project that they could support. Uh, I, I haven't seen the, uh, the state support those types of projects yet. The one, we, we do have some examples of that, uh, in, in the city. Uh, the Tantra, um, Community in South Boulder was purchased kind of through that very same, uh, process. And, um, we, we have, uh, in partnership with BHP, over the years have purchased, um, existing um, apartment buildings. Um, currently we don't, um, have the resources to, um, purchase those now. But, um, I would say two or three times a year, we, we receive a notice at the city, um, of such properties that are coming for sale.
Thanks.
All right, and then T, uh, Tara.
Thank you. And I'll echo the kudos you've already received from my colleagues. Uh, it's really great work. That has already been done on this. In, um, items I noticed was there, what, that hadn't been checked off the list yet was, um, exploring updates to the city's mobile home zone. Um, and it mentioned potential changes could enable new communities in additional zones, advance still, city values, facilitate homeowner-driven home replacement and allow new housing options while avoiding gentrification. And so I was just, um, curious if that's something that's still in process and being worked on. I understand that that was not part of our work plan ask. So, um, uh, but I, I guess just more in general is that part of something staff is working on in the background. And I was also curious about, as we look into our comp planning process. Molly, you mentioned that, um, there are several properties that are just outside of city limits in area two. And it seems like the city has some stricter regulations and, and potentially supports than what the state has. And so it seems like it could be helpful to have those annexed into the city to provide those additional protections to people who are essentially community members, even though they're just on a different side of a line. Um, and so I wonder about through the comp plan process, if we might think about making it easier or more. Or incentivizing the annexation of those properties.
I want to, um, pass that one in to Kurt in a second, but just simply say that the annexation process itself is uh, is instigated by the landowner. The, you know, and you guys are all aware of that, that it, it's a negotiation that takes place. Um, once we have been approached and we've begun working on the terms of that deal. Um, I am not aware if it's of whether or not the comp plan has been looking at making some other, um, opportunities available or making it easy for these properties to come in. Can I call a lifeline? Anybody else from staff have any input on that?
Yeah, so I can, I can give a little bit more background as well. So.
And also, I'm happy to get some follow-up information afterwards.
Sure.
I get that that wasn't part of exactly what we're looking at tonight. So appreciate it.
So, you know, as you heard at the very beginning, you know, the city of Boulder was one of the first, um, in the country to actually create, um, ma- manufactured home zoning. Um, and that was intended, um, to protect the communities from gentrification. In 2019, when the strategy was, um, put in place, um, council was interested in, it, uh, exploring if there was, um, developers that would be interested in opening, um, other, other parks in the city. And, um, we haven't, the high cost of land in the city, we really haven't seen, um, developers that have had that interest. Um, so at that time, um, in that council, at that time, there was interest in, if there was a busy to, um, open another manufactured home community, you know, they would, they would be open for that. So that's, that's why that was, um, placed in there, but it hasn't, we haven't realized, um, any of those opportunities.
All right, that's good enough, Lauren.
Yeah, and hopefully I can still get a little bit more detailed information in an offline follow-up.
You bet.
All right, Tara and then Matt.
Um, so first of all, Molly and Kurt, Molly, that was a great presentation. And personally for me, it's been really great getting to know the, visiting the parks and getting to know a lot of the people that are there. That's been just great. I know a lot of the council members feel that way as well. Um, so I only have one question. What, can you explain why there are those, what seem like vast differences in the lot rents, or though maybe they're not really, they just seem like? That's my only question.
So the question is, the differences in lot.
The slide that had the lot rents?
Right, right.
That one. There seemed to be the threes and then the nines and what would you say is the reason for such a vast, or is that not really that vast of a difference? It just seems.
Yeah, the differences in, in the lot rents in the five parks inside of the city of Boulder are that, um, Ponderosa is owned by the city. And so the lot rents have been raised only once during the years that we have owned that property. And it, it rests in the upper 500s. Um, again, Thistle operates Mapleton Mobile Home Park as a community land trust, and they do it in partnership and a little bit of a cooperative model with the residents. And so they have a sliding scale. They actually do have a, um, uh, AMI pricing plan for those residents ranging from 350 up into the upper 500s again. And then the three other parks are privately held. Um, and I was pleased to see when calling and ga- gathering their rents that none of them have broken a thousand dollars. So the, the glass is half full, half empty there? I don't know. It's, yeah, it's, um, but it is a concern. And that is the ongoing challenge and the discussion you have all raised through this council priority. And that is rents go up. They go up somewhere between four and five percent a year often. And right now they've been, they've been more stable than not since the pandemic. But, um, we know that this is a issue that's not going to go away and we will continue to engage. Kurt, thought?
Yeah, that's, um, that's correct. It's really, um, based on the, the ownership, uh, model of the park. And, um, I, I think we've been pleased, uh, as a city to be able to influence, um, the lot rents and, and keep them very low, um, at both Mapleton and Ponderosa.
Hey, Matt. And Mark.
Thanks, Aaron. Um, Molly, great, great presentation. It, it's nice to get this update, update since there, you know, we tend not to look at this very often and we've just been recently celebrating Boulder mod. And there's other, other communities that are certainly need some love and, and are, and are getting help in very different way, different ways. Um, but first I just want to start with maybe a clarifying, then I'll get to a question and then a comment. Um, I just want to clarify that, um, in, in, in comments made earlier about, uh, and somehow a funding equivalency between money spent on garage renovations and money maybe used for, um, our, 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 our sort of manufactured home communities. Uh, the garage renovations, and maybe this is a question for Nurya or Community Vitality, as, as far as I, I know, that those garage renovations are funded purely through CAGED, which is then thus sort of non-discretionary funds and not from the general fund. So those are not really monies that, that could move around in that manner. So I just want to clarify that so community doesn't sort of pit our, our CAGED investments against how we support our manufactured homes.
That is accurate, that our, uh, downtown garages and the maintenance we do provide to them are from CAGED and separate sources of funding. Yes.
Wonderful. Appreciate that clarity because we don't want those misconceptions out or we're pitting our business community against our, our manufactured home communities. We don't want to do that. Um, so a question really falls a little bit on Lauren and maybe this will come, uh, again in a follow-up, but just maybe clearly sort of around u- utility. I know that there's been some, some issues and some discussions with, uh, uh, San Sushi and, uh, wastewater issues and, and them sort of having to be on their own in that sense. And maybe us bringing utilities out towards, uh, Marshall Mesa. And so I just sort of curious as to how that plays out when there's a community that could really leverage our, uh, uh, experience and, and use of utility and tapping in and where that comes in. And if there's a need, I know there's been some issues of budget for their wastewater system and that sort of thing. So I'd love to know that when, when we talk about that, if those things are brought into that sort of follow-up as well. Um, so there's some like cost benefit of, of where those conversations go with regards to the comp plan. So maybe not an answer, but just flagging that for the future dialogue when, when we have that.
See the question come online. He may have some, uh, input into that particular situation.
Yeah. Good evening, Council, uh, Krista Ville. I'm the Deputy Director of Operations for Utilities. So Councilmember Benjamin, thanks for that comment and we will keep that in mind. Um, just, just to emphasize, I think what Molly covered, yeah, San Sushi, they are in a challenging situation. They're, they're area three and they're currently not part of our service territory. So there would be some pretty significant policy and comp plan changes, um, to even, even have them be eligible for any kind of city services. So we are aware of their challenging situation and empathetic, um, no, no current pathway to do anything, um, short-term, but willing to keep that in mind.
Appreciate that. Yeah, just, you know, we want to keep our water quality top-notch, even if it's our responsibility or the wastewater or, and what goes into our, our creeks and streams. So I appreciate that. Um, next is, is really just a, a comment with regards to Boulder mod. You know, I think our, our first home should be rolling off here pretty soon and it would be great if there's a way for us to celebrate that. I know that we were all there in celebration at the beginning. Um, it'd be nice for us to all celebrate when that first home rolls off and, and is in, 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 in transit to be delivered. I, I think that would be a great, uh, uh, crowning achievement to celebrate the staff, the crews, the s- the, the high school students that have been putting in that work and habitat humanity. So just a thought, i- i- if that's maybe in the works, awesome. But if not, it would be great to celebrate that and, and that wonderful step that, that we've taken and how quickly that's come along. So I just put that out there and I think it'd be great to celebrate the community and, and everybody who's, who's done the work to, to get that to roll off the lot.
Thank you for that. We will, we will work toward that end, Matt.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks again.
Thanks, Mark.
Uh, yeah, just one question. First of all, Molly, great presentation. Uh, thank you very much. Um, uh, a couple of years ago, there was a fairly serious movement, and you may not be able to answer this, but there was a fairly serious movement at the legislature to try to institute some form of rent stabilization for pad rents. Uh, that died unfortunately, um, and, and the governor was fairly adamantly opposed to it. Do you know if there are any, um, efforts to resurrect that kind of bill? Um, and institute that kind of, uh, control over pad rents, or is it simply a, a dead and buried subject at this point?
Um, we're, 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 we will need to talk to our, um, legislator group and see what we can have put in place for the next session. Um, as you know, they start in December, go till May. So we've got some time. We, we just need to go hire that next Carl Castillo. And make sure we have the, some more staffing in front of all of this. Yeah, it was unfortunate, Councilmember Wallach, that, you know, the 2022, I think it was 1287, um, the mayor stripped it out of a bill that ultimately passed and had other benefits for our manufactured housing parks. So the objective would be to continue to reframe the ask and demonstrate again why this would be beneficial for this housing type specifically.
I hope you will continue that effort and, uh, and may the force be with you. Um, I, I think it's a worthy goal. Thank you.
Just, just a clarification though, it was the, uh, the governor that didn't sign it and that made it, but I'm just trying to protect Aaron there.
Yeah, don't, don't, don't look at me. It wasn't me.
Oh, so sorry. I, I don't mean to get you and the governor confused all the time, Aaron. I'm sorry.
No worries. Um, yeah, and we did support that bill at the time and it is in our policy statement to support similar efforts. As, uh, we will continue to advocate for that down at the Capitol, uh, in the legislative session, which I believe starts in January, January to me. Uh, Mark, was that it?
That is all there is. Thank you.
Okay, okay, good. Not seeing any other hands raised. I'll just finish us out just to echo the thanks of all of my colleagues. And it truly was incredibly inspiring to see all of those check marks on that manufactured housing strategy. So huge thanks to, uh, Molly, Kurt, the whole team, uh, for getting so many of those things done. And, um, I was one of the ones that, that was advocating for this to be one of our council priorities and in particular to give another try at that rent stabilization potential deal with the, the park owners. And so, well, it's a shame that that hasn't worked out. I think it was definitely worth trying again. So I really appreciate the effort in that direction. Who knows, maybe one of these days, um, there'll be another opportunity in that direction. So.
And we will continue to look at those unchecked boxes as well.
Uh, the few that remain.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good. Well, again, thanks so much for all your work on, um, the presentation and this item and everything that this initiative entails. I'll say goodnight. And go to our next matters item, please, Elisha.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Um, item 3B on tonight's agenda is advancing key economic development policy initiatives.
And with this item, if my computer is, uh, cooperating with me, we've got to Assistant City Manager, Mark Wolf. Mark, take it away.
Thank you, Nurya, and good evening, Council. We'll pop the slides up and I'll, uh, do a little intro here. All right. Uh, good evening. I'm Mark Wolf, Assistant City Manager. As Nurya said, we are happy to be joining you this evening to share progress on our Economic Vitality Strategy implementation efforts, specifically on four initiatives to, so, to support economic development activities that will require future council action. The proposed initiatives we will cover this evening help address council feedback from the April 24th study session, which called for greater urgency, increased specificity and a focus on actionable steps that the city can take to address some of our economic challenges. Tonight I am joined by Regan Brown, our Senior Project Manager overseeing the Downtown Development Authority project, and, uh, Jennifer Pinsono, our Economic Vitality Manager, both of which you will hear from shortly. Next slide. As you know, uh, city council established supporting economic vitality, addressing commercial vacancies, broadening small business support and expanding our economic development programs and tools as key priorities. This also included enhancing commercial area connections and vibrancy, particularly between the hill and the downtown. Next slide. During the April 24th study session, we reviewed the updated Economic Vitality Strategy, which includes key pillars of equity, resilience, vitality and innovation. We also discussed the commercial district, uh, commercial area district analysis, which recommended exploring a downtown development authority and potential other tools like urban renewal, metro districts and the expansion of general improvement districts. Council emphasized the need to address our economic challenges urgently and supported continued exploration of these district tools. Staff committed to bring back implementation updates, especially those directly influenced by the city with a strong desire to support small businesses and align our economic development efforts with community values. Next slide. In addition to close coordination with our partner organizations such as the Boulder Chamber, the Latino Chamber of Commerce, Visit Boulder, CU Boulder and Downtown Boulder Partnership, staff has taken steps since our April conversation to leverage existing resources to implement the Economic Vitality Strategy with proper urgency and, and the efforts. Uh, we have established a cross-departmental team, including the City Manager's Office, Economic Vitality, Community Vitality, Planning and Development Services and Communications and Engagement to advance efforts in business resources, district support and economic development. In the development of the Economic Vitality Strategy, a key piece of feedback from small. a key piece of feedback from small businesses was the varied knowledge and accessibility of resources available and the differing experiences in working with the city. Uh, we have conducted a review of all potential touchpoints businesses may have with the city and are working on developing training materials for staff so that information is clear and consistent across those touchpoints. We all are also embarking on a review of potential barriers for small businesses in working with the city and how we can make important changes to how we support businesses in this way. For our commercial areas, this year's Broadway median project will help improve streetscape on University Hill. In addition, we have also taken steps to improve the customer experience related to maintenance items within commercial areas. This has included better coordination across departments and improvements to our inquire Boulder processes. The city with our partners has also taken opportunities to make small but quick enhancements to address things like tree grates, weeds and trash across the downtown. We are about to talk about the potential for expanded economic development tools uh for the city's tool belt. Uh, in addition to that, we are continuing to work, work to support key economic development projects such as the East Bookend redevelopment and others. And we are working towards better communication related to process improvement that has already occurred in the last twelve to eighteen months. Uh, make sure that businesses are aware of those process improvements and that there are clear paths for continuous improvement across all city processes in the near future. Next slide. Tonight's presentation focuses on proposed initiatives to expand our economic development tools, including the continued exploration of the Downtown Development Authority, which will provide an update on the progress of those efforts, updating our Boulder Urban Renewal Authority or Bureau, establishing a CHIPS zone in Boulder and expanding our economic development incentive program. These initiatives represent new or enhanced tools for the city and its partners to invigorate economic activity, enhance commercial vibrancy and foster inclusive economic growth. Each of these policy levers will require future council action and represent opportunities to be proactive in addressing flattening sales tax and economic activity. Next slide. And just quickly, as a reminder, we are seeking feedback and guidance on these strategies, uh especially since each item requires its own uh lift from a work plan perspective. Uh, so we thought it was an important uh milestone to check uh the pulse of council on each of the four initiatives this evening. Now I am happy to turn it over to Regan Brown to provide an update on the Downtown Development Authority.
Good evening, council members. Can we go to the next slide, please? As Mark mentioned, I am here to provide an update on our exploration of creating a downtown development authority, also referred to as a DDA. This was one of the key recommendations to come out of the Improvement District Analysis that was just recently completed and was supported by council for further exploration during the April twenty-fourth study session. We are continuing to work with Progressive Urban Management Associates, also known as PUMA, to lead this next phase of work. A DDA is a highly effective governance and funding tool that can support infrastructure, maintenance, programming and operations improvements. It's a tool that can provide solutions to addressing high commercial vacancy rates. It can also be effective in its ability to increase commercial area vibrancy. Regarding the next steps in timeline, we are now kicking off a feasibility study in financial modeling with PUMA. This includes several components, beginning with the engagement kickoff. We'll convene a planning group made up of property owners, commercial tenants, residents and community partners to really help shape and advocate for the DDA. Next, the potential scope. We will begin developing the draft plan of development, which will guide the DDA's vision, strategies and project priorities. The scope will also include mapping out potential DDA boundaries. Financing mechanisms, we will be evaluating potential funding tools, including tax increment financing projections. And then lastly, governance structure, we will be assessing the DDA governance structure, including potential impacts on existing districts. Next slide. Looking ahead towards the end of this year into the beginning of twenty twenty-six, we will be conducting extensive stakeholder engagement with commercial property owners and brokers, businesses, residents, community groups, partner organizations, impacted taxing entities, essentially anyone who would be affected by the creation of a DDA we will be conducting outreach to. Looking ahead to quarter two of twenty twenty-six, we do plan to return to council with an update on the feasibility study findings, the initial DDA proposal and potential recommended next steps. And if the concept is deemed feasible and has strong community support, the goal would be to bring the DDA proposal to voters in the November twenty twenty-six election. And eligible electors would include property owners, commercial tenants and residents within the proposed DDA boundary. With that, we can go to the next slide and I will hand it over to Jennifer Pincino for an update on our other economic vitality initiatives.
Thank you, Regan. Tonight I'll be providing a quick overview of two of the proposed initiatives. The first is an update on the Boulder Urban Renewal Authority or Bureau to create a more effective tool for encouraging investment and revitalization in various areas of the city. Since Bureau was established in the late seventies, state regulations regarding urban renewal authorities have changed. While Bureau commissioners can meet and review projects in the city's two existing urban renewal areas, the authority is limited in its ability to support economic vitality. Updating Bureau to include additional commissioners, including representatives of other taxing authorities would allow Bureau to consider and establish additional renewable urban renewal areas. The mayor would continue to appoint commissioners who would be approved by city council. Um, next slide, please. We propose conducting additional research and planning over the next few months and returning to council early next year to provide a detailed proposal for an updated structure, including Bureau's scope, authority, oversight, composition and appointment process. Next slide, please. Staff has also been gathering information on a program that would support innovation and the growth of businesses in quantum technologies, semiconductors and other advanced industries as well as businesses as further dis- diversification of the local economy. State and federal chip zone programs provide financial incentives to businesses located in geographic areas specifically designated as CHIPS zones. Several of the, several communities, including Longmont, have received one or are, are in the process of applying for chip zone designation. Applying for and receiving a chip zone designation for areas in Boulder would make it possible for quantum semiconductor and other eligible businesses to access state and federal incentives while supporting the retention, expansion and attraction of businesses in emerging high-growth sectors. Application to the state for chip zone would in, require a formal, formal resolution by city council and we propose returning to council within the next several weeks with more detailed information. Next slide, please. We would also bring forth a proposed resolution for consideration. Should council approve the resolution, we would submit a chip zone application to the state. If the state approves, we begin promoting the zone in communications and outreach, targeting advanced industry businesses. Thank you. Next, I'll hand it over to Mark.
All right. Uh, the economic vitality strategy suggests expanding the city's economic development tools to address commercial vacancies and support vibrancy in, in commercial districts. We are proposing to add an expanded incentive program that would be used strategically to support business attraction, expansion and retention. Overall, it's important to frame, why would we consider this? Boulder has a long history of using its beauty and reputation as enough of a natural incentive to attract and retain businesses. Over the years, our region has become more competitive and affordability challenges has made our challenge more acute. I can attest that we have had very difficult budget conversations this week and that our overall economic challenges in sales tax uh generally and property values are, are very real. Together with the other strategies tonight and contained within our economic vitality strategy, we believe that an ec- an expanded economic development incentive program will help us improve our competitiveness as a community and help with our overall economic health. This new incentive program would supplement the existing flexible rebate program. The current flex rebate program is budgeted at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. Wh- while we have seen really excellent returns on our investments uh of approximately ten to one and Jennifer certainly has some really great examples of how this uh program has been utilized over the years. The, the program is limited in both its reach and capacity. No applications for rebates were received in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-four or yet here in twenty twenty-five. This expanded program for, framework would delegate day-to-day management and application review to staff for efficiency with individual incentives approved by the city manager and tied to measurable outcomes. The programmer would feature clear metrics and regular reporting to council on its effectiveness and return on investment. Next slide. Eligibility criteria for incentives would be designed to reflect community values and key opportunities that are appropriate for Boulder. Some potential criteria include optimizing commercial space utilization by reducing commercial vacancies, supporting affordability by encouraging the creation of affordable commercial, commercial space and/or contributing to middle-income housing solutions, promoting equity and inclusivity by supporting diverse businesses and those committed to equitable hiring practices and procurement, advancing sustainability and resilience by encouraging environmental stewardship, encouraging job growth, especially high-quality jobs with competitive wages and benefits, diversifying the local economy by supporting growth in uh key industries identified in the city's economic strategy. Next slide. I'll also note, uh, appreciate council member Wallach's hotline to welcome us back from uh, uh, council vacation. Uh, I, I do want to acknowledge that the, the program is conceptual and uh does not have uh super fine detail at this stage. Uh, as I mentioned at the outset, um, these uh programs, including the incentive program uh are at a good point to get a pulse check from council and, and certainly your feedback tonight uh will help us frame the details. To give a general idea of how this uh might work, we anticipate that a redevelopment proposal would uh apply for um, a developer coming in, doing a redevelopment would come in and apply for the program. Staff would analyze the application based on the criteria and to determine an appropriate incentive amount based on that criteria. This would likely be in the form of a fee waiver uh related to building uh permit fees. An agreement would then be uh signed with the business and reporting and tracking would continue from there. And again, if, if council is uh generally supportive of the concept, uh, we anticipate bringing back uh this for council authorization uh in the next uh few months. Next slide. All right, to wrap up, uh, here is a summary of our anticipated uh timeline for council consideration. And again, we're um excited to do this work. It is, it is um quite a lift and so it'll um be great to get council's feedback at the, the stage. Uh, if we do move forward on these initiatives, uh you will see these come back in rapid succession over the next several months. To emphasize, uh, economic development is crucial for Boulder's overall well-being. A robust and growing economic base is foundational to the city's capacity to fund essential services such as affordable housing, safety net services, public safety through our sales and use tax, property tax and other revenues. These four initiatives are a part of our larger and ongoing efforts to support our business community. But they do represent new policy tools that help expand our business support services overall. And with that, I believe we'll bring you back to the question for this evening that will uh help us establish some parameters uh for these four initiatives. I think we can take the slides down there and back to you, mayor.
All right. Thanks so much, Mark and others for that uh very informative presentation. I will note that we had twenty minutes allocated for it and you did it in eighteen, so nicely done on the stopwatch there. Um, okay, so what I'll ask is, uh, council, if you have any clarifying questions, let's do that first and then after that we can give feedback to staff. So any clarifying questions on the presentation or the memo? Uh, Tina, Matt and Mark.
Yeah, thank you for that um really clear description of the four different initiatives we're looking at. Um, when we're talking about the incentive program, would those be incentives for the whole city or would those be incentives that apply to a part of the city?
It's a, it's a good question. I thi- we're anticipating be able, being able to use the incentive program citywide. I, I think we, wh- what we referenced in potentially using um special districts or general improvement districts is we could look at certain areas to expand those incentives. Um, that, that's an option for us. It would depend on the capacity of the, the specific area, the general improvement district or tool. If we're looking at some of these expanded tools and, and urban renewal uh or the Downtown Development Authority, those also could use a similar criteria that, that uh could come along. Um, so it's both and, but we anticipate that the, the general concept of an expanded incentive program would, would be applicable citywide.
Okay, thanks. Uh, can I call a quay on that, mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Taysha.
Um, Mark, does that also include land or agricultural lands that are in the county when you say citywide?
N- not for land that's not in the city limits proper.
Okay, so then the agricultural um lands that we have in the county, the, those businesses would not be eligible for this. But could they or is that, is that a parameter that could be explored? Because those are critical businesses.
Yeah, it, it's a good question. I, the, our concept is that it would, uh, we would be able to waive fees that are paid to the city. So if they're not limits, then we wouldn't have a mechanism to provide an incentive.
But if that's, if that's the only one you're exploring, I, I think but by closing the door now though, wouldn't you make it impossible to find other options that could be available?
Yeah, I've certainly, um,
Somebody considered, sorry, that's beyond questions, Mark. So I apologize. That, I'll get back to that on comments, but thank you for answering that question. That's my only, my, thank you for allowing me to call a qua.
Great. We'll get back to that later. So we got Matt, Mark, Nicole and Tara. Thanks, Aaron. I appreciate that, that update. It's uh helpful to see us moving along. I know that uh last time we met and talked about this, talked about a little bit of urgency to get the ball rolling and, and here, and the ball is rolling. So this is great to see. A couple, couple of questions. One regarding the DDA. Um, I'm curious about where TDM fits in to, to this. Um, I know we're going to be talking about amps and TDM in their September fourth meeting, um, but it does. I, i- is the DDA the appropriate mechanism from which we would bake in resources for TDM? Um, or is that not standard? So I just, you know, I just thought I'd ask, um, given that we're going to be talking about TDM and there's limited resources and how we approach that and support that. So I didn't know if DDA would be a proper mechanism. And if so, do we bake that in early on into the process in terms of outreach and expectation setting?
Thank you for the question, council member. I'm happy to jump in and, and Mark, if you have anything to add. Um, it's a great question and front, the funding from a DDA certainly can be directed towards initiatives that support TDM. Um, that will really be informed through drafting the plan of development and identifying what uh priority projects the community would like to see in this plan of development, which will guide the policy and the projects um that the DDA implements.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. Well, let's just, let's, let's maybe put a feather in that since we're going to come back and talk about TDM in September. And so maybe DDA is our new vehicles in which we can consider that. So I, I, I appreciate uh Regan, you, you bringing that up and flagging that. Um, the next question uh I have centers around the urban rule. I, I see the timeline for that. I'm a little confused. Um, it's sort of the, the Bureau expansion proposal is in twenty twenty-six. Is that the expansion of our capacity? Is that the expansion of our capacity for operating a more, another bureau per or another urban renewal authority? Is that, is that what I get from that? I guess because I'm asking maybe two ways. Is that where we'll have the capacity to handle it? And then really the the related question that's adjacent to that is at what point are we going to be ready to an, to accept an application for a newer URA? So I think there's sort of tandem. Do we have to wait for all that to be done before we can say, hey, we're ready for it? Or can we accept an application now, just setting the expectations that we've got to get some of the capacity in place before we can take action and we can start to review it?
That's a, that's a great question. Thank you. And I think as far as whether or not and when we can accept applications, I think that might be a legal question. But when we're looking at the timing and expanding, needing to recruit members and appoint members would probably be during the same timeframe that we bring members on board for all those cities, boards and commissions. So that's why we're looking at that timing. I think between now and then, we can be doing a lot of the groundwork and looking into. You know, how exactly we structure that. And we're not talking about a new urban renewal authority. We're just talking about bringing the current authority into compliance with state law.
Can I call a please? And then I won't have a question. And you'll have one less person asking a question. Good, all right. Is there no, is there no way to do it faster? Or in other words, is there any like negative, any negative consequences from not doing it faster? So I get that we're not going to do it till really next March or April. That's a long time away. It's only one board. Is there a reason why we can't move it along a little faster? I'll help. I'm on that subcommittee.
Well, one thing, appreciate the the question, Tara. What we can look into is how we can sequence some of that. So one element of this is making sure the board's in compliance so that it can be in the position to establish a new urban renewal area. There's a whole bunch of work that leads up to establishing a new urban renewal area, doing a, conducting a blight study. Putting together the rules of the road, if you will, for the the new board. How we'll staff it and structure it and all of that kind of stuff. So I I think we can certainly move in parallel so that we're ready. But at this point, we don't have any proposals in or preparing any sort of study for for an area. So we can kind of look into the sequencing there, but certainly appreciate the point on on the urgency.
All right, thanks for that question, Tara. Yeah, anyway, so yeah, that's with the RA, whatever we can do to keep moving the ball. I just know that there's some interest in maybe an application for expanding URA. So just whenever we can wave our hands up and say, we're ready to go, the sooner we can do that, probably perhaps the better. Last question, metropolitan districts. I know we talked about that as part of the Puma study. I didn't really see that here. And so I'm kind of wondering where maybe that resides. I know that wasn't maybe an immediate thing, but I'm wondering if there's, if it's still maybe percolating in scoping and seeing if there's some opportunity here down the road to explore that.
Yeah, we, I think, just had the word in the document and the presentation. What we didn't mention is the the rest of the work that community vitality is leading and looking at all of the district tools, which include looking at metro districts. It includes expanded use of general improvement districts. We are focused on our existing general improvement districts and the future and evolution of those, which could include these other tools. So we are exploring metro districts as a part of that process. Puma is helping us with that work as as well. And so that'll be a, that is a part of the next phase of work over the next several months.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks, Mark. That's it for me.
I got Mark, Nicole, Taysha, Lauren.
Okay, I just have one sort of two part bifurcated question. The first part of it is, to what extent are the projects under the CHIPS program dependent upon state or federal grant monies? And the second part of that question is, in light of the decline in support for these kinds of projects at the federal level. Is the CHIPS program going to remain viable for Boulder? If these projects do need that kind of support and that support is not going to be available. Or potentially not going to be available.
Thank you for the question. I think that whether or not we have a chip zone or whether the federal government continues to support those incentives, the state is supporting those incentives. So they will come from the state. In order to have businesses be eligible for those state programs, we do need to have a chip zone. We are monitoring it to see what happens with federal funding for that. But our ability to go to, to continue to talk with advanced industry businesses and to help support them. We're not supporting them financially necessarily and our incentive, if we have an incentive program in advanced additional incentives, we would still be able to use those regardless of whether or not we had federal incentives to go along with those, if that helps.
Well, it does, but in light of the state's budget, do we not have a similar problem in terms of getting support from the state? And we're looking for various levels of support from entities that may not be in a position or have a desire to give us that support.
I think that these are almost icing on the cake. Hopefully Boulder has enough in terms of many of the other assets and benefits that we offer to companies. That they're not only coming to Boulder for incentives, but incentives do help us attract some businesses and they also help keep us competitive. But that's not the only reason companies are coming to Boulder.
May you be correct. Thank you. That's it.
Hey, Nicole, Taysha, Lauren.
Thank you. And I continue to be amazed at how quickly you all are working through this. So thank you for that. Questions, they're really on the economic development incentives. And I'm just wondering if these types of things might be in the ballpark of things that are being considered. So one of them was around equity and inclusivity and support of women and minority owned businesses. And I was wondering about employee owned businesses, if that's anything that kind of could potentially fall in that same ballpark.
Yes, in short, it it absolutely could. I think, you know, based on council's feedback this evening, I that would be our next step is to develop more specific criteria. And that would be a part of the approval process of the program is to allow you all to see exactly what that criteria is. If that is of interest to council, certainly happy to include that as one of our, one of our criteria.
Okay, thank you. And then the other one that I was wondering about is just around some of the shifts that are happening right now, like public to private, different industries kind of shutting down, others coming. Is anything like workforce development or kind of business, supporting businesses that are working on transitioning, say, from public funding to private funding? Is that in the category of things that might apply here? Or is that a little too far afield?
Yeah, it's a good question. Jennifer might have some specific examples. I I know that our partners are in close conversation with some of those impacted industries, particularly those folks that are affiliated with our federal labs here in Boulder. I I think it's that type of industry specific support that we contemplate with these incentives. We can't support all industries and I don't think we would want to try to support all industries. And so again, what are those specialized industries that have helped grow our economy to what it is? And and to the degree we can anticipate some of those areas that we're really going to need and need to lean into over the next several years. That that's a part of what we're trying to put together with identifying some of those key industries. We'll want some flexibility. Things change. We did not think that this would be a conversation 12 months ago. And here we are. So I think there's some art in in having that flexibility. But certainly we are thinking about that type of support with such a program.
And we are working closely with the Boulder Chamber and the Boulder Valley School District and Front Range Community College as well. See you on workforce development programs. And yeah, so that's, that's continuing work.
Thank you. And then my last question is, it seems like this was within the economic vitality strategy that we've been working on. Does this bump anything to move forward with some of these ideas?
It does not. I think we we contemplated moving these forward. I think the the pace of which is something that we are trying to sequence in the in the right way. Certainly, all of these will will not be able to be accomplished by the end of this council term. But, you know, we we will complete them as as quickly as we are able to.
Great, thank you.
We got Taysha, Lauren, Tara.
Awesome. Mine is fairly quick. I agree with my colleagues' comments regarding the CHIPS program. And I just wanted to, and it made me, it connected with the question I had originally, which is just around how the list was prioritized. And and yeah, just wanted to hear a little bit more around specifically, you know, those strategies that will impact micro and small businesses versus large businesses. I'm just trying to get a sense of of the prioritization of this list.
Yeah, appreciate the question. I, we, that list is not prioritized at the moment as a part of finalizing the criteria. We would.
Sorry, let me, point of clarification on that, Mark. I meant the list of number two, the considerations of the proposal, the by the which quarter the activities were going to fall on. That's what I meant. And just what priority, which why was this CHIPS one first? Is it because it's a lower lift? It doesn't, you know what I mean? And just, I just wanted a little bit more of of what the rationale for.
Yeah, sorry about that. Thanks for the clarification. It is about the lift and sequencing of of some of these and not in kind of order of urgency. Chip zone is something that several other regional cities have embarked on. The state is providing some some light technical assistance to us. So that that lift is a bit lighter. Things like DDA, urban renewal are just a bit more complex, especially from the legal standpoint. And so we're taking the steps that we can on those as quickly as possible. And again, just given the lift on those, that that's why we felt it was appropriate for a council touch point this evening.
Awesome. Thank you. I'll save the rest for comments.
And we got Lauren and then Tara.
Thank you all for this presentation and for the speedy work. So these first couple of questions, I think just like really quick answers, hopefully. So the first one is DDA, would the map of that match an existing boundary? Or is that something to figure out sort of through the engagement process?
Um, thanks for that question, council member. It's the latter. We do have preliminary, a preliminary study area that we're looking at right now that overlaps UGID and CAGID kind of flag polling up along Broadway. But again, it's very preliminary and we will determine the potential DDA boundaries through the engagement.
Thank you. For the CHIPS zone, that mentioned tax incentives from the state and federal level, are there going to be impacts to city tax collection through the creation of that zone?
Thank you for the question. No. So the city is not required to offer an incentive to go along with, there's no matching incentive requirement. What we're hoping is that if we're able to retain and attract new businesses, we would start to see some economic impact from that.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And this might be a more complicated question. And it's fine to get this offline aligner as a future piece of information. But I was wondering about the flex, our current economic development incentive program. You mentioned we had gotten 10 to one sort of return on investment through it. But I was hoping to get a little bit more information about kind of what it's has funded, how much we typically spend annually. Just kind of more details of what our, about our current program looks like.
Yeah, certainly. And it has changed over the years. And participation in the program really went declined over the pandemic. And it's slow in returning as things have have slowed down, slowed down. But we've, our incentives have ranged from 5,000 to 100,000. There were some years when we saw a lot of development and a lot of interest, as well as a lot of companies considering expanding outside of Boulder. There were years where we would do well over 300,000 and our budget used to be much higher. Our average incentive per company is about 50,000. We've had 85 incentives since the program was launched in 2007.
Thank you. That's really helpful. In terms of key industries, would I saw creative industries listed, would that include fine and performing arts? And maybe like local foods? Or would we need to like list the, okay, I'm seeing nodding of heads. That's sufficient.
It's very.
Perfect. And then would it be possible to look at something like self sustaining wage rates or anything around kind of wages, particularly if we were looking at really larger scale economic incentive programs?
I think that we can consider that our current program, the flexible rebate program, looks at both environmental sustainability and it also looks at social sustainability. And one of the criteria, it's, it's kind of a complicated system. But one of the potential criteria is paying more than 50%. It's paying at least an average wage for the whole county. So we do look at wage rate, wage rates.
Yeah, and I'll just add, sorry, Jennifer. Is that we do have some other grant programs in the city that look at criteria such as wages, hiring practices, makeup of boards and leadership within organizations. And so I'm sure we could look at something like that, have been contemplating something like that as a part of the criteria.
Thank you so much. That's it for my questions.
All right, Tara, you have a question after all?
Yes, I did. A quick one. And apologies ahead of time for not focusing on the answer to Matt's question. So yeah, I wasn't listening for a split second. Well, maybe a little more than that. Just kidding. Okay, metro districts. Matt asked about metro districts. What was the answer that you gave him? Do you mind just repeating that real quick?
Yeah, happy to repeat. We we are looking into that. That is a part of the broader commercial district work that community vitality is is leading. We are looking at our existing general improvement districts and the evolution of those tools, which include contemplating things like urban renewal, which we're talking about more detail this evening, but also also metro districts.
So my question is about timing yet again. I'm in a big rush right now for this. Just kidding. So when can looking at the timeline, when can a project apply for a metro district at this point? When do you think that could happen?
So it's a fair question. We would have some work to do if we determine that metro districts are a tool that we would like to use as a city. We would need to establish some parameters via code. So we would be working closely with Teresa and her shop on on that. So our first step is really to work with Puma, our consultants, to help us look at the different tools. There will be some kind of cost benefit analysis and we'll be bringing that forward to to council at a later point. Timing wise, I I can't remember the exact timing of that next touch point with council, likely Q4 and early Q1 next year.
Thanks.
Okay, that's all of our questions. So now the question that staff has for us is, does council have any feedback or specific guidance on the proposed timeline, engagement strategies or key parameters for each of the four initiatives? And I'm going to start with the presumption that staff has done amazing work and that we love their ideas because I think they're coming from a fantastic place. So what I would encourage folks is if you have any specific guidance passed with their proposal or proposals to maybe shift it a little bit to offer those up. But if you just think, hey, this is all great, I think we could just start from that assumption to maybe control our conversation a little bit. All right, so we got Tina and then Nicole.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for reminding me of that, Erin. Um I uh the first is just that for the CHIPS, I learned a little bit about the quantum opportunities in the New Mexico to Wyoming corridor. And I think it's pretty exciting, so I I would love to see that on a um on a faster timeline if possible. Or at least what you suggest is great, uh but I think it's exciting and I like to see us able to participate in that effort. Um the second is when we're looking at the vacancy incentives. I'm curious um if it makes sense to look at how our requirements for creating new retail space with development. Might be um exacerbating that the vacancies that we have in our city. So it's it's been um eye opening as we're looking at projects to see that we're looking at new retail requirements. While current retail is sitting empty. So if there's a recommendation that comes out of that, um I'd love to hear it. But of course, only if it makes sense with the work that we're doing. Uh the other piece is on the incentive for the, particularly the downtown commercial space. Um I am personally interested, and this is just one person speaking, in any kind of. Um if people see an opportunity to convert second and third floor space into housing. I would like to, there to be a lot of um incentives around that if possible, or to explore it. Including the uh cash and low for certain areas. Um the reason being that uh repurposing existing. Construction is our most eco-friendly uh pathway to creating housing, if it's if it's gonna stay vacant. And it also would hopefully have more people living downtown and uh taking advantage of the retail and restaurants that are down there. So that's a personal um preference to see a very rich incentive offering if someone could figure out that thorny problem. Of uh conversion of offices to homes, especially in the downtown area. And then my last thought to explore um is just to understand when we look at the metro districts. I've heard that there is some hesitancy uh from some from some groups that um. That 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 they're not always successful. If there's a way to understand where they've been successful and what that structure looks like. Uh that would be great, but also to understand what are the the negative um impacts of that. So if we, you know, I'm just really interested in learning in depth, sort of the pros and cons. And is there a way to do it better if we do decide to go that route? So those are my thoughts and uh that's it, thank you. And it all sounds terrific.
All right, we got Nicole, Taysha, and Tara.
Thank you. Um and yeah, thanks Erin for summarizing, so we don't have to. Um I just wanted to say that I really uh appreciate um the timeline. This seems quite ambitious, actually. Especially since um I expect there are a lot of legal issues involved. And I know a lot of our work plan priorities have already put a lot on the city attorney's office, so um I I just wanna say like this this. This timeline, even though it won't wrap up with this town council, still seems completely reasonable to me and even um pretty fast. So thank you for for your work on that. Um and I know that you all are working as as hard as you can to get it done quickly. Um in thinking about the economic development incentives, uh wherever it's possible, it would be really interesting to. Consider engagement with uh workers or labor groups, or thinking about this part of the economic development piece too. Uh because workers are central to it. And Mayor Protempo, Kurtz mentioned um the idea of wages. And you all mentioned, we already have some things kind of around those, but just thinking about how we can uh make sure to include. Uh those kinds of perspectives and these things too, where possible, um is something that I would be really interested in, in addition to everything you've already said. So thanks again um for all the great work that you're doing.
Thanks. Aisha, Tara, Lauren.
Awesome, thank you. Um and so I would say um in general, very supportive of. Uh the current direction. Um just feel, would like to have uh agriculture be included for the incentive program. Um recognizing that they, in my opinion, are a key uh industry as well. Um and I know it's not a storefront, I know it's not downtown, but many of our um local farms sell. Um downtown at our farmer's market and could even play a bigger role depending on uh the direction of the civic area and the work there. So just really would love to see um. That that them being considered even when it comes to business development and training and all of the things that are are currently available. To more traditional businesses. Um the other piece is around the equity um component. And um just wanted to lift up and make sure that the uh black equity study um that's coming out of Colorado. Uh History Colorado is also um being considered in this effort as as a component of valid and reliable work that's being done in our area. And I believe some initial findings are already available. I wanted to go back to the Ag statement and say back to my former co- to my colleague. Um I'm aware of the restrictions on on the parking garages, but though it is our, you know, not our fault. Um that those funds are available and they are restricted, it is our responsibility um to ensure. And it is our responsibility to tell our community the facts, and that is the fact. So um I'm, and I'm hopeful you and many, many others are committed to. Um strengthening that starved, pun intended, uh industry. And then lastly, um I just wanted to um again, you know, lift up the expansion of the. Of the Urban Renewal Board. Um really excited to see that effort. Um and am eager to make sure that all of the stakeholder groups that were referenced um have a meaningful seat at the table. So thank you so much and look forward for um more information as the work continues.
Thanks, Taran Lauren.
Okay, um just real quick, of course, you can tell I'm very excited about Bureau, Metro Districts, the DDA, et cetera. I don't need to say that, because you already told us we don't need to. But I have a quick, I have a quick question. And that was what Tina discussed, uh the ground floor retail. So I have been thinking about this as well. And do we have to do anything as a council if we want to start dissuading? Ground floor retail from a lot of our new builds? Or do we just keep saying no to planning board? I mean, this might be totally off the subject. But I figure I might as well ask if we should be doing something to whoever should ask it. To change the um, how do I put it? You know, I don't need to say more. You know what I'm saying. Do you?
Yeah, I I think so. Uh I think we'll have to get back to you with a little bit more detail. I think a lot of your uh downtown zones, commercial zones allow that type of use on the first floor, and so I I.
No, I'm not saying I don't want the use on the first floor. I just don't want it to be like, we have to do it. And in a lot of our new bills, I'm noticing that we're having to have the ground floor retail that is sitting empty.
We can, we can uh get back to you and provide a little bit more information on that.
That's it, okay, Lauren.
I thought Teresa's hand go up for a second. I just wanted to make sure. That you don't have any.
I can follow up with a council member separately, thank you.
Um I appreciate that staff is moving forward quickly on this. Um and the guardrails that they're looking at to make sure each one of these programs bring forward maximum benefit in alignment with our community's values. Um I really appreciated Tina's comments, both about the zoning um requirements for first floor retail. And looking at that and also potentially incentives to convert upper level commercial space to residential. I support the fee waiver and in-kind services as part of economic. Uh new economic development incentive program. Um and appreciate the inclusion of creative industries, agriculture, and local foods. Um and would like to see some wage criteria included as part of that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, man.
I'll keep it pretty short. Uh it's all, this is great, this is all good momentum. Um I would just say, if there's only one comment, which is uh faster, please. Uh it's about it, but I know that there's limitations to that, and so uh where where we can get some of those things going. But specifically DDA and and urban renewal, and then hopefully metropolitan districts, these are just ways to reinvest is. Gonna be what really kickstarts a lot of areas. Um so so that is needed as fast as we can get it. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, I'll go ahead and call on myself and just say a huge thank you to all of you for this amazing work. Uh we had a study session on this not that long ago, and a big thing we asked for for that was specificity. And you clearly heard us loud and clear, and these are four specific areas that I think are all very deserving of action. And I think your timelines generally look good. And I mean, to Matt's point, sooner is always good, right? So if that's possible, that'd be fantastic, but it's it's a really good set of actions, so. Uh very much look forward to all of these coming to fruition. And I'll just call out the, in terms of the incentive program. Um fee waivers have been something that I've been interested in for a very long time, but it's never been something that we've been willing as an organization to look at. So I'm really excited to see that we're going to look at that now. And the criteria will of course be critically important. And so you've heard from Lauren about wages, um the various other ways. We want to be supporting projects that that fulfill our values as a community. So I know you have that message, and that'll be very important to get those criteria just right. And I'm sure we'll have some feedback on the specifics as we get to that point. And then just the one other thing I'll mention about that is uh another area that I've always been interested in, fee waivers, is for affordable housing. So that's a little separate from Economic Vitality, but while we're talking about fee waivers, I just thought I'd get that out there. Um that that would be another great opportunity to look at potential fee waivers sometime in the future. And that's all I got. I don't see any other hands raised. So um staff, did that give you the guidance that you needed?
It did. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Fantastic. Well, thanks again for all your amazing work. I would look forward to the results of the next stages. Well, Alicia, I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda.
It does, sir, but I see Ryan has his hand up.
Okay, Ryan, you got something for us?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, just before we close, I wanted to take a minute and recognize the team. Who is behind this significant effort to develop the new format for memos and the Agenda Access system that launched tonight. Um this new memo format is, I think it's really exciting, and it has a number of fields and notes in it that add a lot of new. Functionality for policymaking and for transparency. One of the things I think is especially exciting is that it has a note on climate resilience and sustainability. Which now goes to every proposal and every other item that comes to council. Uh and I also think the visual refresh looks great. So I'm taking a minute to say this, because I think folks might not. Might not, you know, realize what what's what what's launching tonight. So it's really neat. Uh I know a lot of people worked on this, a whole project team. Pam, Alicia, Emily, Megs, IT colleagues, and others. And just wanted to recognize you and say that this is poised to help strengthen what we can achieve, and it's a great new resource for the community.
If I may, Ryan, A, thank you so much for that. And there's, and you're right, there's a whole project team, but while we've got E on camera, Alicia. Uh I I want to just give props because the launching of it, just uh for the Forbes packet. Uh was just so much work, uh and just wanted to give you some props, Alicia, while you're on camera, because it was a huge lift. I know you got a lot of support, but man, that was a big lift. Um so a whole project team behind to get us here. Uh but thanks for helping to launch it and make it go live.
Thank you all. We so appreciate that. And Nurya, thank you for that, you know, that specific. Um thank you to me. So it's very heartfelt. Thank you so much, and I'm glad it's working out. I even liked the behind the scenes part. So this is my first time monitoring, so I'm really excited. So thank you all again.
Yeah, thanks so much, Ryan. Really glad glad that you brought that up, and we're just so, so grateful. So in keeping with our rules of procedures, how about a quick round of jazz hands and appreciation for all the amazing work? All right. And with that, that brings us to a close, so I will go ahead and gavel us closed here. Seven fifty-nine PM, thirty-one minutes early. Great meeting, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.